Give me a thumbs up. Or a thumbstone. On it. Yes, that's an I. Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Valento.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved this evening. We are going to move on to our first regular agenda item, which is the newly sequenced. And I just lost it here. The Resolution 01112105 Church of St. Peter PUD Amendment. And Donovan, I believe you are taking us through this.
Yes.
Council, if you're following in your massive packet, it's page 560 of the packet is the resolution. Go ahead, Donovan.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council like to present the PUD amendment for the St. Pierre Forest Lake Church. This is, the church is located at 1250 South Shore Drive. This has come before council on a couple of other occasions regarding the multiple structures in which an institution has at their, their campus. And this one relates to both a rectory, otherwise known as a single family home in city zoning language, and accessory structure in which they'd like to construct on the property. Because it involves changes in site and additional structures, it does meet the threshold for requiring a amendment to the existing conditional use permit and the planned unit development that's for the, for the property. The CUP was approved by the planning commission. They have found decision with those applications. And the, the planning development of the PUD is now amendment application is before council. I'd like to present just briefly the, the application. What you have is the close-up of the property. Located somewhat in a residential neighborhood, you know, as many churches are. And where the proposed rectory is located is just off the southwest corner of the parking lot. This whole parking lot was reconstructed in 2017 as part of a previous PUD and CUP application. So the rectory will go here, replacing these current accessory structures, the storage sheds. And the proposed storage shed is proposed behind the, what's known as the annex building. Here, within this, these trees, and so little lower area. So somewhat out of public view, obviously closer to some homes, but kind of down, down a little hill from that main parking lot area. The, the application specifically for the site plan is again located, you know, off that, that main parking area. You can see here just the entrance to it. And kind of and then more clearly here with this showing some utility connections for the water sewer to serve that single-family dwelling here, the SFD is the proposed location. And then a little clearer is the storage shed. And this is proposed to be 1800 square feet. And this will replace the other storage they're, they're losing with putting the single, rectory, single-family home on that site. And also just here's a, you know, a elevation drawing of the proposed rectory with a floor plan. And then also the basic outlines of the shed, which does meet the height and area requirements for a parcel this size and within the single-family zoning district. The, the planning commission did recommend council approval of this with the conditions that all the CUP conditions were met. And the, you know, because these are all private improvements. The seed engineer, you know, has some conditions, but they're mostly related to just making sure that basic public safety and the building code is supported. Rice Creek Wireshed District has approved a cap rock for the, for the, this, which is a basically a pre-permit from their review. And at this point, staff recommendation is for council to adopt the Resolution 01112105 to approve the construction of the rectory on the church property and accessory structure for storage at the church property. With that, I'm happy to take in questions from council.
Thank you, Donovan. Donovan, before we open up questions to count from council, do we have any members of the project team present this evening that wish to speak?
Karen, do you know the answer to that one? Or Dan, I guess you're the host? I did, they were, I believe there were issued invitations.
I will, yeah, there's one I'll promote him in right now. Sorry about that.
The only one I have is Father Bodine, and I can't move him in, so.
We're gonna right now.
Perfect. Before we do, before we do that and hear from the project team, any initial questions that council has for Donovan? I'm not, I'm not seeing any initial questions. I believe we have Father Bodine joining us. Is that right?
You'll, you'll need to unmute yourself, Father Bodine.
Father Bodine, I just wanted to welcome you to our council meeting. We just heard staff report for the recommendation to approve. Just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak if you wanted to address council. You certainly don't have to. I'm glad you're here this evening and just wanted to give you an opportunity if you wanted it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bane and council members. I'm here just to answer any further questions that you may have about the project.
Excellent. Councilmembers, any questions of Father Bodine this evening? I did have an opportunity to catch the conversations with planning commission, so I don't have any specific questions that are unanswered at this time. Council, anything further? All right, let's bring the conversation back to, bring questions back to staff and council. Happy to entertain other questions council may have or a motion, if anyone's ready for a motion.
I just wanted to say it's kind of, it's a very large area there, and I certainly don't have a problem with it because I'm a member of that church. Matter of fact, if it was possible, I would abstain. But I certainly don't have a problem with what they're doing and, and, but maybe that's one-sided comment too. So as long as the planning commission didn't have a whole lot to say about it, then they have their normal conditions on it. I think it would be a good project.
To councilmember Husnick's point, Donovan, was that a unanimous decision of planning commissioner, was there a dissent expressed?
There is no dissent expressed. So it was unanimous decision.
Okay. And was there any, I'm not recalling if there was any negative community feedback as part of that?
No, I did receive one, one call in, you know, with, with that public notification, and it was unrelated complaint regarding parking, and I forwarded to the church.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question?
Go ahead. Oh, I was gonna make a motion to approve Resolution number 01-11-21-05, a resolution approving the PUD amendment for the Church of St. Peter of Forest Lake Plan Unit Development.
We have a motion from councilmember Munson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second from councilmember Beistrum. Any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
I've seen.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. Motion approved. Father Bodine, thanks for joining us this evening. Good luck with your project.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
All right, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of specific license renewals that we, we pulled from the consent agenda for some additional consideration. Karen, do you want to walk us through these particular licenses?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. And I, and I do apologize because I don't have my documents up in front of me. I'm having a little difficulty today with my
Okay.
computer, so I'm not able to access any Adobe files. It's kind of interesting. But these licenses were separated out and put onto the regular agenda, just to kind of call your attention to them. These are the same licenses that we had addressed last year, or actually didn't, we didn't get to because of the pandemic. And so these seven different licenses, it's four liquor licenses and three tobacco licenses that had some compliance issues. The compliance issues we're going to be addressing at, scheduled for the June 25th meeting. A public hearing has been posted for that, and so we will have a public hearing on whatever council's decision is on how to handle the administrative penalties for that. I believe I included what the administrative penalties were in the packet, just as a refresher on what was discussed or looked at last, I believe it was last April, maybe before that. And so it was just to bring these more forward to your attention to show you they have not been forgotten about in terms of the compliance issue that they had. However, we still need to take a look at what do we do about approving their license. And, and just based on what I read in the ordinance, it doesn't necessarily speak to not approving their license if they haven't satisfied their administrative penalties. So it's, it looks to me like it's council's option on approval of all of this and moving them forward into 2021, and the licenses could be issued.
Karen, a quick point of clarification. You said June 25th, and it's January 25th. We've got the public hearing scheduled for, nope, just quick point of clarification.
Yep, January 25th is when it's scheduled. I have published a notification in the paper for that. It is posted on our website. So, and just, and I guess what I would be bringing forward to council at that point in time for the hearing, the recommendation, and we've discussed this a little bit, is to recommend at that time that those administrative fees all be waived. That includes the monetary and the license suspension on those. So the recommendation is going to be to waive all of that.
Clarifying question to that point, and I don't know if this is Karen or Amanda. If council were to approve these licenses this evening, and then through the compliance hearing that we will have in January, if it is deemed that there is some license action necessary as a result of that, are we able to still take all license options on the 25th, even if we approve those licenses this evening?
So what you're looking at right now is their new license application? And then what you would be looking at in the 25th is their license application from last year? Because they're, the penalties related to last year's license. They're, they're two separate licenses.
Your Honor.
I'm sorry, Pete Michael here, the ghost in the shadows. Sorry, I just say that approving their license renewals right now will not prejudice in any way the liberty that council has to make determinations after the public hearing. Should any enforcement action be merited in, in your minds?
Okay. And a point of clarification, the reason for the differentiation of timing is that the hearing, or the process of evaluating and reacting to the compliance violations requires a public hearing with some notice requirements, which is why we have to push an agenda time to later this month. Which is why the sequencing is a bit awkward. And then also the sequencing is a bit even further awkward in that the consideration of the what we will do as a result of the compliance violations has been pushed back because of COVID. So it's, we are in a bit of an unusual situation. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Councilmember Munson, you'll pick you had a question.
I, um, yes, start of our statement. I guess I don't, I don't have an issue with approving their 2021 license, but I guess I it would make sense then to hold my questions about their 20, their 2020. Did I say that right? 2021, 2020? What year are we? A 20, 2020 license. But I assume because of the public hearing that to save those questions for that time, correct? Okay.
Yeah, when you, after your public hearing, you will deliberate on what you want to do with the violations and how you want to treat them. So you'll have an opportunity at that point to discuss.
Okay.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not 100% clear on this, kind of this course of action. So if we were to approve 2021 this evening and take some action two weeks from now, that the action would be retroactive to their 2020 license? I'm, I'm not, I'm not 100, I'm not 100% clear, because we can't suspend or revoke a 2020 license. We can't impose a suspension. 2020 is behind us. So I'm, I'm unclear on
This conversation with Bridget back in, I feel like it was in March or April, we had the conversation with Bridget. The suggestion was to put all that on hold, suspend the action at the time because of the pandemic, and they were all shut down anyways. So, you know, suspending their license, you know, kind of was pointless as they were already shut down. So it's really, I think, probably just a formality.
But, but here, but here's the issue, here's the issue for me. And I, and I know this body and city staff recognize that I have very little tolerance for entities that serve to minors in this community, whether it's alcohol or tobacco. I've, I've taken a pretty firm stand on that when we were discussing tobacco violations earlier and a movement toward Tobacco 21. And I've said it many times, I can show grace, a lot of grace for one mistake, because we all make mistakes. I can show grace for even two mistakes. But we've got a couple of chronic offenders here that I, that I'm, I, I really would like to better understand what their course of action is, you know, what provisions, what actions are they going to put in place to take this from happening again? And I just, I feel powerless right now under the circumstances with them. And so I am not, I'm not sure what, where, where I can go with this.
Yep. Let me try to help you out here just a little bit, is, is the way I understand. This is for their 2021 license, which is a totally distinct item from the violation that happened last year. What you will be deliberating at, after the public hearing and at the, at the next meeting is the violation that happened in 2020. That's when you will decide what kind of violation or what kind of penalty you may impose or may not impose. I don't believe that any kind of action that you take, even if you were to suspend or fine next time, would enable you to not renew their license this time, and I can be corrected by our attorneys, but I believe that's the way this works.
Okay.
And the full, the, the, I just, I also want to further understand process, the proper channel or the proper audience for all of those questions of facts that we might have around these circumstances. That's all part of the planned content for the 25th meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Yeah. And then also just to make sure I'm hearing this right, we have a full menu of options as it relates to compliance enforcement, regardless of whether we take, whether we approve these renewals or not tonight. We have a full menu of options available to us on the 25th.
Your Honor?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. And I was tracking your questions. I, my apologies to council that I have not been on video for most of this call. And I'm going to go back off video in a second. The the council does not have at this point in time the discretion to deny a license renewal based on the allegations of what happened last year. Those applicants have due process rights to be heard on those before you could take any action based on them. To the extent that there would be an interest in enforcement beyond a fine, if you're thinking about revocation, then it might be prudent to, and I haven't vetted fully your code on this. So I'm flying a little bit by the seat here, but to, to make the motion to approve provisional until the outcome of the, the public hearing. So that there's no question in your mind, or in the public record, that you are taking any enforcement action off of the table after the public hearing.
Councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, Mark, the question that I would have to repeat, and I appreciate your expertise, believe me. But what would be wrong with tabling it until the 25th? We're only talking about a couple of weeks.
I was gonna ask the same thing. When do these licenses actually expire?
Well, that's, that's the part of the issue. So if we table this on the, until the 25th, that is going to put them into non-compliance with their current license, because I'm not going to have enough time to get that to the state to alcohol and gambling enforcement, have them issue, because they're the final authority, and get that back to me so that I can get those lights out to the license holders.
All right. Well, you answered my question. Appreciate it.
Now, once it gets to the state, I can't control their timeline.
You know, as long as we have some control of this on the 25th, or we're after to, to address Kathy's issues and so forth. Based on that, then I'd make a motion that we go ahead and issue those licenses for we have one through seven businesses issue those licenses pending the public hearing on the 25th.
I will second that.
There is a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. Any further discussion on this item? I too will echo councilmember Beistrum's concerns on overall compliance, pandemic or no pandemic, we need enforcement of our, our age restrictions. This is still important. Public health is as important as ever. So I look forward to more discussion on the 25th. Any other?
It'll give them, it'll give them a chance to explain to us exactly what they're, how they're going to fix it. You know, and we've had that passed before, and one particular instance where three times when you're out, you know, that kind of thing. So be looking forward to that public hearing.
Agreed. Councilmember Beistrum?
Yeah, just one final comment for me. I guess, I guess it might be valuable to take a look at our penalties for alcohol violations, just to be sure they're, I know we, we strengthened our tobacco penalty policy, and it might be a good idea to take a look at our alcohol penalties as well, to be sure that we're, we're in similar alignment there. We know strong policies are a deterrent. So.
Agree.
And make sure you're serious.
Right. Uh, I'm not seeing any other questions. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. Motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the CARES Act funding final report. Patrick, I believe you are walking us through this.
Yes, attached to your packet tonight is a recap of the, well, what the city has spent and how the city has spent their CARE Act funds. This is what we will be submitting to the, to the management budget for the state of Minnesota. What it does not do, based on council directions, include money for the building at the golf course. It leaves a balance of approximately $149,000 that we may have to return to the state. One of the latest federal legislations had the CARES Act funding extend, the period to extend those, that funding expenditures until the 31st of December in 2021. However, that only applies to state government or local government with 500,000 population or more. We have, however, asked the state if there's possibility of an extension for us to do that. We have not heard back. I doubt that we will get an extension on this. I think they want to wrap, the state wants to wrap it up, and it's my understanding that there's some laws that the state has passed when they got the CARES Act funding that any, any excess money will go to the state budget instead of local budget. So, but we still asked, and we'll see what happens. But we are finished with the CARES Act. We've done all the accounting. The real only thing that left to do is we'll have to have a federal audit for these funds, which is different than our regular audit. So we recommend approval, and hopefully we will be finished with this part of the CARES Act.
Thank you, Patrick. Kelly, go ahead.
Just, just a quick question. I was gonna answer anyway. Patrick, can you just clarify one thing? Is the balance, you said 149,000? I just want to make sure the balance that's on our sheet is, it's different than 149. I know it's a matter of
Yeah, it's, it's hard for me to read here. Hold on. What's the, what's the balance on your sheet?
143,727 and 2 cents.
Oh, I apologize. That must have been an earlier one. Yes, it's 143,727.
I just, I didn't want someone to ask, what did you do with the other?
No, I was probably looking at a different report when I was talking. So, yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Husnick, go ahead.
Yeah, as long as we have this open discussion here about this, there seemed to be a lot of misconception and misinformation about what we were planning on doing with that money. And where did some of this stuff come from? I mean, some of it was used for wages and whatever. And it had never been discussed with the city council, ever.
Yeah, I know.
Any of it.
I cannot comment on what the rumors and innuendos were in the public part of this conversation. As you all know, it was originally intended to construct a golf course building, which I still believe was a legal and appropriate expense of CARES Act fund based on all of the things that staff has read and our auditors mentioned. So once the council changed direction, which was fine, that's everybody's, we had no intention of putting it to any more salaries. We, we were pretty much through all of the CARES Act funding and all of the expenses that we could qualify for. If we were, and I, I think we had a reporter from a TV station talk to management budget, I don't know who. Nobody confirmed with the, any city staff what the intent of the remainder of the money was going to be. So it was really all speculation by the public, whoever the public people part decided it was. There, we, we've gone over this over and over again. We have used some for payroll, which is associated with the administration of the CARES Act, which is appropriate. And all the other things that you see documented there are appropriate under the CARES Act. So I don't know where all that came from.
Yeah. And that's, and that's too bad, because it's, you get this public perception that there's something going on when it wasn't going on. And I just want to get the facts out there for everybody. And, and as far as I'm concerned, it was nothing more than a political stunt. So.
Unfortunately, when the television, the second television story came out, it was during the holidays where it was difficult to get ahold of people. People were on vacation, people were on holidays. Who, I don't know who they talked to at MMB, but somebody, you know, we, we inquire with MMB how we could use the remaining funds, if we could use the remaining funds. There was no commitment how to use that. And Sam, you're absolutely correct. Is that we would have, we would have gone back to council to ask for how to administer those funds.
Have we requested, have we requested a correction or retraction on that?
Have we requested? Have we requested a correction or retraction on that story in any way, shape or form? Or have we just decided to let it go?
We have issued a statement. We have not asked for a retraction at this point.
Questions as it relates to, I want to maybe clarify suggested action. So Patrick, you're looking for council approval tonight of what will be considered the final CARES Act report. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's in the city's best interest to have an action that says this is the final report. This is what we expended the funds on, so that there's absolutely no question in the mind of anybody in the community or television stations or newspapers, whatever, how those funds were expended, and that they were all expended properly.
And then assuming that council were to take that action tonight, is the next step to file an amended report? Or does that actually get filed with MMB?
No, we will file the final report.
Okay.
Not an amended report.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Council, other questions on specifically on this topic?
And I don't know if this is relevant to this discussion, but just curious about the next steps with the Castlewood discussion.
Well, I think it's in the best interest for the council to discuss that at a future meeting quickly, I hope, because I will tell you, as I told the EDA, I believe it's still in. We have the building. We paid for a lot of the expenses. I think we should move forward with that. You have a golf course that has not been invested in by the city and probably since its beginning. We need to look to the future of how we're going to run the golf course, run the golf course like any other business, make it make it at least break even. So and I've said it over and over, so that we do not use taxpayers' money to support this golf course. Would like the golfers to support the golf course. And most people out in the community believe business sometimes should governments should run like a business at times. This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to run like a business so that we at least break even and not spend taxpayers' dollars to support this golf course. If we get too far down the line and paying, you know, spending taxpayers, maybe we should close it, but I'm not advocating that by any stretch of the imagination. However, there will be times where we need to invest some capital monies into the golf course to keep it operating, whether it's new fencing or whatever, to to keep the golf course in good shape and so that people can play golf. It's a great community amenity. People love it. As you all remember, about this time last year, we had a room full of golfers and people who wanted to make sure we kept that golf course open. And we found a way to do it, and we're trying to look to the future of the golf course and how we should how we should run it. And I believe that a new building will help us do that. It's I would think it's a good expenditure.
Go ahead, councilmember Husnick.
Yeah, Kathy, I agree with you in the respect that I think we have to have an in-depth discussion about exactly what, because there was a bunch of misconceptions about what's going on there with the building thing. And so you know, for a future date workshop, whatever, and the sooner than later, no question about that. Because, believe it or not, someday we're gonna have spring again. And I hope at least, and we we got to be prepared for this, and we certainly want to make sure that we don't lose our management out there at the golf course. And if this keeps up, that could be a possibility. So we don't want that to happen. So.
I would I would agree with that. I I think we've, you know, we we've kind of hit the jackpot with that management company. They've done an outstanding job. They love it here. And we need to be sure that we're providing a product that, you know, and and investing on our end. And I look at a capital expense often as just that kind of that one-time expense to, you know, to enhance, you know, enhance what's going on out there. So and you know, provide some additional opportunities for them, whether they're the simulator machines, you know, space to be able to do that. You know, opportunities for the senior golfers to, you know, grab a beverage and a hot dog before, because they usually wrap up long before Stella's opens. And so it's, you know, I mean, I think there's a I think there's a balance we can find there to ensure everybody's happy with the decision we make moving forward. But I look forward to workshopping it or whatever direction we decide to go as well.
The golf courses were one of the few places you could go during a pandemic. So I was really happy that we had that available for people and it's a public entity. So anyways, thanks. That's all I need.
Councilmember Husnick and councilmember Beistrom, you've both mentioned our, you know, consideration of feedback from our relationship with our golf course operator, and I think I absolutely agree. We've also mentioned consideration of, you know, of Stella's as being our neighbor and absolutely agree with that. I would add on top of that, this does need to get through planning commission, and so consideration of planning commission concerns should be part of those that conversation, and then ultimately parks, lakes and trails, because this is also their amenity. So however we facilitate that, Patrick will look to you to kind of provide next steps. And if that means a joint workshop, happy to entertain a joint workshop when it's the appropriate time.
Yeah, I think that's why it won't go to this Wednesday's plan commission, but it'll go to the next plan commission meeting. We've already been there twice, and they've been asking us for a lot of information. We want to make sure we get it right, so we don't have to go back and forth with time. So we anticipate that happening. And then we would like to get this on the agenda as soon as possible, so that we have a possibility of constructing it. Winter's been pretty mild. Or if not, you know, early April or late March and get this thing open for the season.
You know, councilmember Munson, I think you had a question, and Kathy will pick you up afterwards.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question. Does the I know you've discussed this. I wasn't able to view the EDA meeting tonight. Do they have to be? I shouldn't say do they have to are, do they have a role in the workshop or? Or is it just parks, lakes and trails?
This is really a parks, lakes and trails issue. This is not, we're not subsidizing or making economic development. We're not a competition to the restaurant. So we were being that informing them just to make sure that they knew to be polite, to be informative. But this is a this is a council member council decision. This is also parks, lakes and trails.
Okay.
Those are the two lanes we need to go through.
To reflect their feedback on this last meeting and then the meeting we had in December, I would call them a very strongly interested party. And certainly certainly interested in the outcome. Councilmember Beistrom.
I just want I just want to make a comment that I've been observing a lot of folks out there cross-country skiing. And so when we talk about the potential for a year-round facility right there, a place where we could maybe rent snowshoes or cross-country skis, and the idea of potentially working with the county, as we've done in the past, to do some trail grooming. I just think I think we can, we I think it's just a win-win for for our community, for the residents of our community, to be able to to turn that into something they can utilize year-round.
And then one, I think, final comment, and this is this is administrative, but worth noting, I think, Patrick, you mentioned that there is, because we used over 150, over $750,000 of federal dollars, that this does trigger a single audit requirement. And I think you mentioned that that's been coordinated with the auditors, but just wanted to make sure that that is planned.
Yes, any any amount spent like this for federal funds will require a single audit, which is a separate and distinct audit from our regularly annual financial reports. Our auditors are able to do that. They will look at these funds separately. They've already looked at some of the expenditures. They've looked to make sure we are in doing things correctly based on not only accounting, but also the rules of the the grant. So yes, it'll be a single audit has to be have.
Excellent. Thank you. We do still have an item on the table, which is a a motion to pass the final CARES Act report or a a motion to support the final CARES Act support. Is anybody willing to entertain a motion? Councilmember Husnick.
I can make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the CARES Act funding final report, which includes sending back 143,720. To send it back to the state of Minnesota, I believe.
Right.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion from councilmember Husnick and a second from councilmember Munson. It looks like we lost councilmember Beistrom from a from a technology challenge, so she will be back on here in just a moment. But let's keep moving. Karen, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Member Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Sorry, if you guys lose me, it's saying my connection is unstable. Councilmember Beistrom?
Um, I was just kicked out, so I'm assuming this is the CARES Act vote.
Yeah. Just to clarify, Karen, can you read back the motion to councilmember Beistrom, just so she's got clarification?
Sam made a motion to approve the CARES Act funding final report, which includes sending back the money to the state for, I don't have the total dollar amount for, that was going to be used on the Castlewood project.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye, and motion approved. We will move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is recognition of a donation from the American Legion Post 225 for Veterans Memorial Park. Who is presenting this this evening? I don't know if I had a note in my file. And councilmember, go ahead.
I think it was Jay. I think it was Jamie that received this. She passed it on to me, so I'm not sure if she's in the meeting or not.
Doesn't.
She's not in the meeting.
Does it look like it?
This is this is a donation for the memorial at Lakeside Park, I believe.
Councilmembers, this is page.
Sorry.
Councilmembers, this is page 555 in your packet, and it's resolution 01112103. And I would motion that we approve the donation from American Legion Post 225 with gratitude.
Second.
Have a motion and a second from councilmember Munson. Any discussion? Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye, motion approved. Our next agenda item this evening is resolution 01112404. This is page 556 in your packet. Receipt of a $50 donation from Joan Paulson. Chief Peterson, anything further to add on this?
No, I just want to let you know that the Forest Lake Police Department, for many years now, has received an annual donation from Forest Lake resident Joan Paulson in the amount of $50. And I definitely want to publicly thank her for her support and definitely financial support of the Forest Lake Police Department.
Mayor Bane, you go ahead.
Mayor Bane, I move approval of resolution number 01112104. A resolution accepting a donation from Joan Paulson in the amount of $50 with gratitude.
I'll second it.
A motion from councilmember Beistrom and a second from councilmember Husnick. And Karen, could we have another roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye, motion approved. We are moving on to, and now we are back to our regular numbering scheme, 8F, the 2021 Caterpillar loader purchase. Dave? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm here seeking approval for purchase of a 2021 Caterpillar wheel loader. I'm going to be replacing an existing loader in the fleet. The loader is 15 years old and almost 6,500 hours on it. The current replacement policy for this loader is 12 years and 5,000 hours. So it is exceeding both both requirements. Basically, there was it's it's we bid on the state bid, so we don't have to go to the get multiple bids. It's already been pre-bid on on state bid. We were budgeted $185,000 for this purchase. With the trade-in of our current loader, it came to 179,822 or roughly $6,000 on our budget. Just one one thing to point out on this is you can see the trade-in for the loader is $11,500, which that's what happens when you let a piece of equipment get that old. Not only is it costing a lot of money annually by my mechanic to repair and keep keep up, but also, once it's time to trade in, you I mean, it's you can buy a vehicle that's probably worth more than this this loader right now. So just something to point out as we it's kind of a broken record, and these lot of this equipment we've been upgrading now is the same story as that it's either relatively worth nothing or, you know, very minimal amounts. So. Other than that, I'm just here tonight, just to sum up, too, is also approved in the 2021 budget under the equipment fund purchase. So it's already been approved, just a purchase over $50,000, which has to come to council to get basically re-approved. So here tonight, just seek approval for the purchase of a 2021 Caterpillar 926 loader for 1179,822.
Thank you, Dave. Council, what questions do we have of Dave this evening? David, we've got a number of items on the agenda for you for large equipment purchases tonight, and those were all part of, as you mentioned, part of the 2021 Capital Improvement Fund. Not tonight, but sometime in the near term. I would find it helpful as we think about just planning for capital equipment plan for 2022. Just where are we from an overall equipment standpoint for your department? We've been doing a lot of catch-up, which happy to support. It's the right thing to do. But just where are we and how are we, you know, how much progress have we made just looking at it? We we look at the overall capital equipment fund, and then we look at individual purchases, but I haven't really thought about the whole Public Works fleet as a whole for a bit, and it'd be good to just have an update future meeting at some point.
Yep, you're absolutely correct. We have been catching up quite well. I have it out through about 2040 now with equipment. So I've been able to put newer equipment coming in, been able to kind of stack stuff in, keeping also in mind to change some of this equipment replacement policy to also to speed up these replacements to keep these pieces of equipments within warranty and get rid of them after the warranty expires. So not only to cut down on costs, but to save mechanic work and all that. So it's it's a very good discussion to have going forward of what my my thoughts are on what current replacement policy is, what we should probably be looking for, and then give you examples of what what trade-in values are worth at different years and why it makes sense to, you know, step up some of these replacements. But definitely, I can I can get a presentation put together, and then I want to, you know, February, March, we can have a workshop about it, just kind of show you where we're at and what we're.
When it works, that would be helpful. Happy to support tonight's purchases. However, council, other questions specific for Dave on this item? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Bane, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Caterpillar 926M loader for 179,822.
I'll second it. Motion from councilmember Munson and a second from councilmember Beistrom. Further discussion on this item this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. Motion approved. Our next agenda item is 8F, the 20, I'm sorry, 8G, resolution 01112106, which is designation of the Forest Lake Times. Councilmembers, this is page 592 of your packet. Um, Councilmembers, this is page five, ninety-two of your packet, and, or the resolutions on page five, ninety-two. And Karen, I believe you're walking us through this.
I am. So again, I apologize. Thank you, ma'am, Karen. I don't have, um, in documents or paperwork in front of me, but this is an annual, uh, approval that has to come before council. It's part of the statute that we designate, um, a newspaper that we publish, uh, items like public hearings or any public notices in. And so, um, I think what I attached in the, um, packet is the statute along with the letter from the Forest Lake Times, um, which cites all of their fees. And, um, I haven't received, uh, letter from anyone else, or I think it's basically their bid. I haven't received that from anyone else, just Forest Lake Times. So the recommendation would be to accept, uh, Forest Lake Times as the official newspaper for the city of Forest Lake.
Karen, thank you. Any questions for Karen on this topic? I will just say, I, we, I think we are so fortunate that we still have a local newspaper and that we have access to a local, local reporters and a local editor. So, uh, with gratitude for that, I would motion that we approve resolution zero, one, eleven, twenty, one, zero, six, which is the resolution, resolution designating the Forest Lake Times as the official newspaper for the city of Forest Lake for the year 2021. Again, we have a motion and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
It looks like we may have lost Councilmember Beistrum again.
Okay, Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, and motion, hold on. Councilmember, but, Councilmember Beistrum, the motion on the table, and we are mid-vote, is to approve the Forest Lake Times as the official newspaper. We haven't called it, if you would like to still vote.
I, I'm sorry, I have never had this problem in my life, but not loving me tonight.
It is the, it is the day, so yes. Uh, so with that, Karen, you, we, we recorded all votes, correct?
We did, and I got yours.
Perfect. With that, um, motion approved. And we will move on to item, um, eight G, which is the designation of depositories for funds, which is represented on resolution zero, one, eleven, twenty, one, zero, seven. Page five, ninety-four of your packet, Sandy, welcome.
Thanks. Um, yeah, this is something that we have to annually. It's, um, designating our depositories, which includes our checking account as well as our investment accounts, and they're listed set forth on the resolution.
Excellent. Any, Councilmembers, any questions for Sandy? Not seeing any, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero, one, dash, eleven, dash, twenty-one, dash, oh, seven. A resolution de- designating depositories for funds of the city of Forest Lake.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Munson, and we'll take a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion? I will just take a, a quick note. Um, one of the items that we are approving tonight is the PMA Financial Network. At some point, we should workshop and present and give to council just a summary of the success of that program or the results of that program, since we have implemented it now that we've got some history to look at. Um, that would be a, a good topic for workshop when it fits.
Yep, they can come out and give you a full report on that.
That would be great. With that, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, motion approved. Next item, we go back to Dave, 2021 Groundmaster Purchase.
Hi, Mayor Council, sorry, Mayor Council, this is, uh, the second item of three for equipment purchases. This is a Groundmaster Lawn Mower. Um, this kind of falls in line with, uh, Public Works taking back, uh, the maintenance, lawn maintenance at Fenway, strategically taking that back by hiring a, an FTE. And this would be, uh, at least one to two days of just people coming out there mowing. Uh, and the other three days, two to three days, we can be out at Blue and Camp Comedians, uh, showing the airport, those types of bigger areas. So, um, city was, or Public Works is budgeted $120,000 for this purchase. Uh, it came in at about one fif- one fifteen, oh, fifty-six and ninety-nine cents, or about $5,000 under, $5,000 on the budget. Um, this would be a addition to the fleet. This isn't replacing a piece of equipment. So, um, as our, our parks department is increasing, um, we'll be up to three and a half FTEs now for parks. Um, so we got to get in some equipment around this, or doing some mowing on top of our season I was using the smaller equipment. So, um, yeah, unless you have any other questions, I'm just seeking approval for, uh, a purchase of a 2021 Groundmaster fifty-nine, ten for 115,056 and ninety-nine cents.
Thank you, Dave. Council, any questions for Dave? And if no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2021 Groundmaster fifty-nine, ten for 115,000 dollars, 115,056 dollars and 99 cents.
So a motion is there, and, uh, so a motion from Councilmember Beistrum, a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, Karen, could we have another roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, motion approved. And staying with Dave this evening, our next item is the 2021 Pelican Street Sweeper. Dave, if you want to walk us through this.
Yep, Mayor and Council, uh, this, uh, final, uh, equipment ask for Public Works this evening. Um, the difference in this one, this, this purchase would come out of the Surface Water, uh, Fund. And on the last, uh, council meeting, we discussed, uh, CIP purchases, uh, with Nigeria, and this is highly sought after from the Lake Association as well, Lake Association as well, to keep our, our streets, streets clean. Uh, we have two sweeper, two sweepers, uh, across one, which is, uh, a vacuum type sweeper that gets used daily in the, in the summertime. This one's a mechanical, uh, sweeper. It's used predominantly in the spring and fall, and then if we have storms or, or big events where there's major debris on the ground. Um, Public Works is budgeted $245,000, uh, for this purchase. Um, got a fairly good deal on, on this one, uh, 226,000 dollars. Two hundred and twenty-six, four sixty-five, or almost $20,000 under budget. Um, just to point out again, if you, if you look in the memo, the trade-in for the, the current one we have was $12,000. So we're, we're buying a almost 250, 230,000 dollar sweeper, and we're getting $12,000 back for the current one we have. So, um, like we discussed before, um, being more, uh, just with our trade-ins and our equipment replier policies, so we, we get a little bit more value back for these, these pieces of equipment that we're, we're swapping out as, uh, a good discussion point. So just to point that out again, that we're basically giving a piece of equipment away that's just no, no longer of value. Um, so I'm just here tonight to see if you have any other questions. Approval, uh, for a 2021 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper for 226,465 dollars.
Thank you, Dave. Point, quick point of clarification. I think you said this, I just want to confirm. Oh, yep, it's right there in the front. This comes out of the Surface Water Management Fund in its entirety? Okay.
Entirety, yep.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for Dave on this item? Here is, hearing and seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve. Councilmember Husnick?
Mayor Bain, yeah, Mayor Bain, I'll, uh, make a motion, approve the purchase of the, um, 2021 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper for the price of 226,465 dollars. Minus, I guess minus the, uh, trade-in.
Just a quick net, 456 dollars. I think you just transpose the last two digits.
Oh, did I say it? Oh, okay, I probably did. Sorry, well, I, I will note the change.
That's fine. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Beistrum. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, and motion approved. Davey, good for a couple of weeks? Yeah, good.
He's been on a spending spree.
It happens every year. We make him, we make him, we're the ones that put him into these annual buckets. And so he just plays our budget game. All right, we will move on to, um, resolution zero, one, eleven, twenty, one, oh, eight, which is pa- page six hundred in your packet, water treatment plant two, bid results and reward recommendations. Ryan, you're up.
There's city council in your packet. We have the bid results and order recommendations with our attached resolution for water treatment plant two rehabilitation project, uh, following the CIP. This is project two of three, uh, previously, while, while we're substantially complete on water treatment plant one and three. Final completion will be later half of February. Uh, just working through some very small minor details here and there to finish that project out. Uh, but bid open in for this project, we held on December 10th, where we publicly opened bids for the water treatment plant rehabilitation project. We received five bids. Low responsible bidder is Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated in the amount of 1,039,600 dollars, and so a recommendation to award water treatment plant two rehabilitation by resolution zero, one, dash, eleven, dash, twenty-one, dash, zero, eight for water treatment plant two to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated.
Thank you, Ryan. Council, any questions for Ryan on this item? Some note to members of the public that are watching this, wouldn't see a pretty high dollar amount. This was, um, on the project plan and has had a fair amount of previous council discussion. And so, uh, we are in, in final approval phase. Not seeing any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor Bain, um, I make a motion to approve resolution number zero, one, dash, one, one, dash, two, one, dash, zero, eight. Resolution awarding contract for WTP two rehabilitation project to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions, Inc., with a net total bid in the amount of 1,039,600 dollars, authorizing the mayor and city administrator or city clerk to sign said contract.
A second. We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, um, Karen, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, motion approved. Moving right along, we are on eight L, zero, one, resolution zero, one, eleven, twenty, one, zero, nine, which is page six, nineteen of your packet. Uh, this is a joint powers and court services amendment renewal. And Chief Peterson, welcome again.
Yep, well, uh, Mayor and City Councilmembers, uh, the current state of Minnesota and city of Forest Lake Joint Powers Agreement and Court Services Agreement is expiring soon and needs to be renewed. The Joint Powers Agreement and Court Services Amendment provides the Forest Lake Police Department and the city prosecuting attorney access to the Minnesota Criminal Justice Data Communications Network and those systems and tools which are allowed by law. More specifically, it gives us access to the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehensions data systems, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, National Crime Information Center systems, and the State Court Administrator Office systems. These are all systems that we utilize to assist us in doing our daily jobs each and every day. Uh, the Joint Powers Agreement and Court Services Agreement will be in effect for five years. Our city attorney, Amanda Johnson, has reviewed the new GPA and Court Services Amendment, and staff recommendation is to approve the Joint Powers Agreement and Court Services Amendment.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions for Chief this evening? And if no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Husnick, yes?
Sure, I make, I make a motion that we adopt resolution zero, one, dash, one, one, dash, two, one, dash, zero, nine, the JPA and Court Service Amendment Renewal with the Forest Lake Police Department.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second by, from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion on this item? Not hearing any, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening, um, is the communication and park coordinator hiring. Dan, I believe you're walking us through this.
I am, uh, Mayor, members of council, um, I have a hire, hiring recommendation, uh, tonight for the newly created communications and park coordinator position. Um, la- late last, uh, year, so late in 2020, 2020, we underwent a recruitment for the position, um, received over 30 applications uh, for the newly created position. Um, we did test the top-ranked candidates and performed interviews, um, via Zoom. After all that was, uh, done, a decision was made to pursue the hiring of Jackie Weneki for the position, um, based on Jackie's performance in both the interview and testing process, uh, positive reference checks. Um, we did offer a conditional job offer, uh, to Jackie. Um, this offer is contingent upon city council approval. Um, if she is approved this evening, um, her anticipated start date is January 19th, so next Tuesday, so relatively quick turnaround, um, for her first, uh, first day on, on the job. Um, it is staff recommendation to approve the hire of Jackie Weneki to the position of Communication and Park Coordinator, um, at grade five, step one, which is the, um, budgeted, uh, salary for the position. And I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, council may have regarding this hire.
Dan, thank you. Uh, Council, any questions for Dan on the, um, item for your consideration tonight? I, I know this is, this, um, been, this, uh, hire has been some time in the works, and so happy to, happy to see it come to fruition. And I, I know Jamie and Dan, you've both done a fair amount of work in the recruitment of this, so thank you for those efforts. Um, I'm thrilled that we've got a candidate that's ready to come on board, and, um, we've, there's a strong slate of work to be done. So, um, I, I am happy to support this this evening. And with that, I would make the approval, oh, shit, I just missed, sorry. Um, I would make, or I would make, um, I would motion that we approve the hire of Jackie Weneki in the position of Communication Parks Coordinator at, um, grade five, step one.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not hearing any further discussion, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, and motion approved. Next item on the agenda and the final item on our, on our regular agenda this evening is, um, council is on commission and board appointments. Um, council members, you should have received an email from Karen this afternoon that provides, um, two attachments with two memos of proposal. Um, I would suggest that. I would suggest that we start with the Commission and Committee appointments. And I'll just walk through this since we have community members following along who may not have seen the recommendations. So just to review, I am recommending for council approval this evening, the appointment of two members to the Airport Commission, Don Steeler, who is a return and our current, our, my AirPod just died, bear with me for a second. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay. Don Steeler is a returning member in our current Airport Chair. I recommend reappointment to a three-year term. And then Mark Lynch is a new member and I recommend for appointment for a three-year term. Parks, Trails, and Lakes, I recommend both Tim Miller and Doug Ramseth as renewals to their existing position, and those are both three-year terms. And then on the Planning Commission, we have returning members Justin Brink and Mike Keen recommended for three-year terms. We did have a resignation from our current Chair Eric Lignis and regret to accept his resignation, but recommend for appointment. And happy to pull out of city retirement, former City Councilmember and former Planning Commission Chair Paul Gerard has offered to continue his service to the City of Forest Lake, and so would recommend him for appointment as well. We do still have one open Planning Commission seat. I have a number of applicants that I am considering, and I would plan to bring that recommendation to you at our next council meeting. Want to have a couple more conversations before I make a final decision. But I'm happy to recommend and slate this slate of candidates this evening. I would ask for approval of this before we move on and talk about liaison assignments. Is there, happy to entertain any questions? Or any motions anyone would like to make?
Mayor Bane, I move approval of the Commission appointments as outlined.
A second.
A second?
Member Munson, seconded, I believe.
Yes, and can you hear me okay?
No, now we can.
Now you can?
You're back.
We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrom and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Karen, could we do a quick roll call vote on this?
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Hi.
Councilmember Valento?
Hi.
Mayor Bane?
I, motion, motion carries. And then follow-up this evening, second for council's consideration is liaison appointment recommendations. As I considered liaison appointments and where we are with city work, I feel like COVID has had a significant impact this last year and that we've got a number of commissions that are in the midst of work, and so I looked for consistency as much as possible. And so with that, I've put together a slate of recommendations. With, let me just highlight any specific changes on here. Specific changes, obviously, Councilmember Valento to the Cable Commission and the Rush Line Corridor, as well as the Watershed District. And then all other positions are as previously assigned for active boards and commissions. I have also identified, as I was going through this process, that we have a number of boards and commissions that are in transition. And rather doing an appointment to something that is in transition, I felt that it was perhaps best for us to earmark and to identify suggested next steps. And so if I may, just talk through what those are and just make sure that we are, have some consensus on what those, some of those suggested next steps are. Most of these have been discussed already. So the Fenway Athletic Advisory Board, we have talked about, since they are, we are transitioning our relationship with FLLAW, we have talked about transitioning that board into a broader Parks Facilities Advisory Committee. We have some opportunities specifically as it relates to certainly Fenway, but also Castlewood, as well as the Senior Center potentially, to think about this as a broader facilities advisory board. But I believe that needs some additional definition before we talk about what does that look like for a liaison assignment. And so again, I would recommend that we not make an appointment tonight and that we consider based on a potentially reorganized commission targeted end of the first quarter of this year. That's a little bit unknown and a little bit determined, you know, kind of depending on what's going on with, we've got conversations with the Senior Center, conversations with Castlewood, and certainly the transition at Fenway. Secondly, we had, we have an active finance, we have a finance committee identified that has been inactive in over the last couple of years. Personally, I have found council to be very involved in the budget process. And much of what the Finance Committee previously did, which was around budget guidance to staff during the budget preparation process, I find personally that council has adequate oversight and visibility to that process in July and August. And so rather than continue on a underutilized committee, I would recommend that we make it, make it inactive. If we were to define a specific need, I'm happy to reconsider, but without a specific need, I'm, I'm again proposing that we make, make the Finance Committee inactive. We've talked a number of times about the Human Rights Commission and similar of inactive status. Happy to report that the Everyone Belongs Innovation Phase just wrapped up at the fourth quarter of last year. They are in a planning organization launch phase in January and February of this year, and this is in partnership with the YMCA and the Forest Lake Area School District. One of the topics of consideration is future organizational structure. And before we do anything with the Human Rights Commission, I think we've really got a great partnership opportunity that is going to emerge out of that process. And so I would recommend that we continue inactive status until we're able to evaluate and make some recommendations on what those next steps might look like. I would anticipate that we can have more information for further action, potentially as early as the beginning of the second quarter, or early in the second quarter. We're able to pivot and plan of what's needed for the Planning Commission or for the Human Rights Commission. And then secondly, as I mentioned up above, related to the Fenway Athletic Advisory Board, we also have a Senior Center that is in transition. I think it's important that we consider feedback from the Senior Center stakeholders, but then also consider what we're doing with a broader facilities commission to really just, what does that structure look like? And what's the right liaison structure to make that successful? And so I would also table that until we have further action. I'm not sure what those dates look like. I was just targeting early second quarter of 2011 as when we might have some additional information. With that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions. Oh, one other addition. We, we also need to appoint this evening a deputy mayor, and I would ask that we appoint Councilmember Husnick as our deputy mayor, which is a position that he has filled for the last two years. And I'll pause for questions.
I, I don't, I don't really have a question, just an observation that I, it feels a little unbalanced for me right now, and I just want you to know I'm here. And willing to, willing to take on another role. So, you know, losing both the Fenway Advisory Committee and the Senior Board Liaison Role. So just want you to know that whatever opportunities may arise, I don't want my fellow council members to be, you know, absorbing, you know, just, just want to take a look at balance potentially there, so.
That is, that is great feedback, and please know my intent was not to reduce anybody's amount of work. Really, there's, there's always more. My, I, I would suspect, however, as we consider next steps for both Fenway and Senior Center, that's got strong alignment with Parks, Lakes, and Trails, or Parks, Trails, and Lakes, and so I think that that, that kind of, my, my current position is that stays on your plate and somehow, some fashion. I think we're just a little unprepared tonight or to know what that looks like.
Okay.
Any other feedback items? Again, we go through this process annually. There's no magic to annual, so if something isn't working from a scheduling perspective, areas, how, how you want to spend your time on council, we can shuffle seats as we go through the year. And so please don't hesitate to reach out if something is not a match for any reason. Otherwise, I would look for your approval this evening.
Mayor Bane, I move approval of your Boards and Commissions Council Liaison Appointments as outlined and the appointment of Councilmember Husnick to deputy mayor position, to the deputy mayor position.
And I'll second.
The motion from Councilmember Beistrom and a second from Councilmember Munson. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Hi.
Councilmember Valento?
Hi.
Mayor Bane?
I, and motion approved. That concludes the end of our regular agenda this evening. We will move into staff updates. Let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, just two items. We continue to work on the airport business parks sale. We are hoping that that will close by the first week in February. There seems to be no impediments that we've come up to. They are doing their due diligence with soil testing and environmental and so forth. And the other thing is, I'd like to mention is the tenure plan. We left that behind last year. Unless you want to vote to approve it as is, which I don't think you might do. I think we need to have a further discussion on that. I would like to schedule some time and get your thoughts on that. If you can take a second look at it and kind of digest that, and if you have thoughts, stop in or email me your thoughts on what kind of changes or how that might look. I will get new copies out to y'all just in case you misplaced them, but that's something we need to continue to, to, to work on so that we have some kind of plan as we go forward. And then include as well the parks portion of that. Hopefully, within the next two or three months or so. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Patrick. I would just, I would add on to that, especially as we think about the detail that was provided of all of the detail that's in that tenure plan. I know there's some items listed on there that I could use a more definition of what's anticipated by that. And so even those types of questions around where you just need some education on what's included, I think there's really no question too small at this point, and we'll just gather the question bucket together and get information out there.
I agree.
Any, any other questions for Patrick? Go ahead, Councilmember Beistrom.
Patrick, just wondering if we've made any progress on the FLLAW agreement?
Yeah, actually, I talked to Jamie about that today. She has made some, it's not the FLLAW agreement anymore, it's the, the rates. And yes, she has come up with a model that she is almost ready to present, so that should be in the next week or two. I just talked to her about that actually this afternoon, so it's getting close.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Very good. Well, Dan next, and then we'll do Chief Peterson.
Mayor members of council, just have an update on the next downtown committee meeting. This will be next January 25th. They'll be reviewing planner bids for downtown planning, so I just want to make everybody aware that they are getting close to hiring a downtown planning firm for the, developing a plan for our downtown area. And then also, last week, I sent out the links to the new Washington County Business Grant Program. Those links are on our Facebook, our Facebook page and on our website as well on the homepage. They are currently accepting applications, and Chris Eng gave a nice update on that program during the EDA meeting where he went into pretty good detail on the program. So I would refer you to that video to get caught up on the grant program, but links are on our Facebook page and website for that Washington County Grant Program. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dan this evening? Not seeing any. We will move on to Chief Peterson and then the Pete and Amanda team after Chief Peterson.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, the only update I have for you tonight is our police personnel, and I believe some of our fire personnel have started getting vaccinated for COVID. We fall into phase one because we are first responders, and we do respond to all medicals, so some of our personnel started getting vaccinated a couple of weeks ago, and that will continue through the month. Other than that, it's good to have 2020 behind us. Looking forward to 2021 and happy to everyone.
Terrific to hear about the vaccinations. And you said fire as well?
I believe so. Yep, they are first responders as well, so I'm almost positive.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for Chief Peterson this evening? Chief, so between, between you and Donovan, we had some feedback from a community member this evening to open forum over an enforcement item. Just for councils, kind of background, kind of additional information around that concern, could you just, between the two of you, kind of forward on kind of nature of, nature of the item and then also where it's at from an enforcement action? I just think that's valuable information for council to have.
Sure, Donovan, you want to take, take over on this in the beginning?
It's, and we don't need to, I don't, I don't intend, I don't mean for you to cover it all this evening, but if you could just forward on to council via email, just some of the details.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah. Excellent. Anything else for Chief Peterson? All right, Amanda. And after Amanda, we'll go to Ryan.
Yeah, your honor and council, we don't have any update tonight, but we are available for questions.
Any questions for Amanda this evening? Seeing none, Ryan, and then Donovan after Ryan.
Mayor City Council, just a friendly reminder, next Tuesday, we'll have our City Council Workshop in Washington County. We'll be presenting Everton Avenue County State Aid Highway 33 project. We'll look at several alternatives, cost estimates, see where that with public engagements, and make some decisions within. So you'll be receiving some council packet information this week for that workshop, so you can review it prior to the workshop and ask some questions to city staff. If you need some clarification or just have some routine questions with the project. Probably going to be a lot of busy things coming forward towards you guys the next couple of months, just getting on the gates. We'll have a sewer, sewer lining project coming forward that's in the capital improvement plan. And then as states finalizes our state aid allotments here at the end of January, you will know where we stand with our maintenance and construction funds. Therefore, then we'll bring the maintenance project forward too. There's a lot of private development activity out there as well, so a lot of that stuff will be coming trickling towards City Council after Planning Commission visits too, so. So if anything comes up and you got questions prior to the meeting, feel free to reach out and get any background information you might need to assist with your decisions. So with all that, I don't have an update on Highway 97. I've tried contacting MinDOTs, I'll follow up, continue to follow up till, see where we're at with that. But I think that be warranted for them to come back to the council, whether it's just a workshop, just to give us some updates and then just kind of show where things are at and developing with that project. So with that, I'll open up with any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for Ryan? All right, we will move on to Donovan, and then after Donovan, Dave.
All right, Mayor members of council, welcome to Councilmember Valento onto the council, and again, welcome to the returning members. I also welcome Councilmember Gerard back to the Planning Commission, but it kind of produced a conundrum. I passed around to staff a retirement card, and I don't know if we need a legal opinion on this one, but is it okay to give it to him or not?
Denied.
All right, we'll, we'll save it. Eventually, he'll, he'll get tired of us.
We had to cancel the parade too, so.
We knew he couldn't stay away.
With that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Donovan this? Any questions for Donovan this evening? All right. Dave and Sandy after Dave.
Mayor, council, just a couple of quick updates. Trying to save the hockey rinks with this warm weather. So staff is going to move to overnights. So we'll be flooding rinks. The rinks are open till 10 p.m. So staff will be coming in at midnight and flooding some, midnight till 8 a.m. to try to get some ice back on the rinks and get off of them during the daytime when they're just pretty much turning a lot. So hopefully we can can save them. They were looking really good up until today. They really went backwards pretty quick. So. So if you see the lights on at Tower Art Belt, you see some bright light shining. That's staff is flooding overnight through this, through Friday, and then we'll see where it at after that. Second update is starting the recruitment process. We have a, an opening for Public Works and Parks, Parks Maintenance and then also a utility maintenance. So we will start with internal postings and then I'm going to out to the public here at the end of the month. With that, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, me.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, Sandy, and then Karen after Sandy.
I have nothing to add unless there's any questions for me.
Any questions for Sandy this evening? All right, Karen.
I don't have any updates at this time.
Karen is just hoping our next agenda packet doesn't start. The first draft was like 950 pages long. So that's, that's been Karen's life for the last couple of weeks. So thank you for the work on that packet. It's a lot. Um, I think I got all staffed. Did I forget it? I don't think I, I don't, I think we've got everybody. So we're going to move on to council updates. Let's start with Councilmember Hesnick and then Councilmember Munson.
Thank you, Mayor Bain. Couple of things. First of all, I do want to say welcome to Councilmember Valento. Welcome and let's carry on. By the way, I'm the last old guy left. So please don't pick on me too much. Okay? I attended the EDA meeting tonight with Mayor Bain. So I'm going to let Mark talk about that, but you know, some of the things we talked about there. Also last Wednesday I attended the Airport Commission Meeting. And there we were just kind of rearranging our, our, our airport layout plan for final approval and for something that we might do in the future. Also, there was some talk about, we have a business out there that tows banners and he needs a permission slip from the city of Forest Lake to satisfy the state MinDOT folks. So that'll be coming up on our next agenda at the regular item or what, or probably consent agenda at our next regular meeting. So that's pretty much it for all I have right now. So. And then Kathy, the message Kathy, see, she was having trouble with her computer tonight because she was laughing at me because I was having trouble with my computer. That's what you get, see?
The internet, the internet trolls are working for sure.
They are.
All right.
So thank you. That's, that's all I have for tonight.
Perfect. Councilmember Munson?
Yeah, I also want to welcome Councilmember Valento to the council and I, I know what you're feeling. This first meeting is super overwhelming. And not all packets are close to a thousand pages. So don't worry about that. The only update that I have is met the FLOW board, met a couple of weeks ago now. Actually just prior to the approval of winter sports. So I can imagine that there are some very happy coaches on the FLOW board to see their, their sports start up. And then Rush Line has not met and I'll connect with you, Councilmember Valento. There is a meeting this coming week. Mayor Bain, I don't know how you want to, I feel like it's last minute for Councilmember Valento.
However, the two of you are able to coordinate schedules. Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Councilmember Beistrum and then Councilmember Valento.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say Councilmember Hesnick, you're not the only older one on the council here. As I welcome Councilmember Valento, I would add that I was her preschool teacher. So. So there you go.
That's the absolute best thing I've heard. I love that.
Yeah.
Wow.
Not much, not much for me to report. Just wanted to let you know that I did go through the, or complete the Board of Appeals and Equalization Training. So we have another, another council member that's certified. Ready to go. And that's all I have.
Excellent. And good opportunity for me to plug that training again. Whether you decide to go through with the actual certification is your decision, but the training materials I found to be very helpful. Because ultimately each of us are sitting down with residents, talking over their concerns and just understanding the process and those calculations. I found the training incredibly helpful in that role. So I would advocate for it. Yeah.
I would echo that and it was quick. I mean, it, you know, took me, I don't know, 30, 45 minutes, I think. So I highly recommend it.
Anyone else is interested, Karen can hook you up with the, with the registration for that. Very good. Councilmember Valento, this is our opportunity for council updates. Welcome. Want to give you an opportunity to give an update, but also recognize you've been in position for less than two hours still. So I'm glad you're here. Want to give you an opportunity for an update if you want to give anything.
Obviously no updates since I'm new, but I'm so excited to be here and to get to work with all of you. This first meeting was very exciting and I look forward to the future and working with all of you. So thanks again.
Excellent. Quick, just a couple of items for mayor update. Have, as Sam mentioned, we did have an EDA, EDA meeting earlier this evening. We received a great update from Washington County on the FAST, what they're calling their FAST, the FAST Grant Program, which is their COVID relief dollars that are funded by the state's most recent round of COVID relief. There is a robust app, well, there's a robust process and a fairly streamlined application process that I would encourage any businesses who are impacted by COVID to look into. And they are motivated for quick turnarounds, quick funding, hence the name FAST. And I always appreciate Washington County's service and our partnership with them. So we got a good update from Chris Eng on that program tonight. We also talked through 2021 work plan and prioritization. No surprise, COVID has had some impact on some of those work plan items and we are trying to get a 21 appropriate work plan with right work items. I would say I don't anticipate our areas of focus changing. Our strategies changing tremendously, although I would say we might take some different tactics and we might do some different prioritization given kind of what's, what's projected here for 2021. EDA did not approve that tonight. And we will bring that back to them at a future meeting for further update and refinement, but we did have really good discussion. Then as I previously mentioned, there is some interest and some advocacy on that group for the overall Castlewood project. And I suspect that that group is certainly a stakeholder and certainly interested in next steps. So we will, we will keep them posted and they certainly have access to the Parks, Trails and Lakes meetings as well as planning commission meetings as well. Other updates, I did mention briefly as we talked about the overall kind of status of the Human Rights Commission, the process that the Everyone Belongs team is in. They are meeting weekly, every week, Tuesday evenings through January and February to get through what we're calling this launch phase. The goal of the launch phase is to do twofold. One is to have a program framework that speaks to the different topic areas that would be proposed and then a detailed project plan. One of those, as I mentioned, one of those structural areas is organization structure. And I would expect that that work plan that comes out of this eight week process will have some next steps suggested as to how does this current partnership evolve over time to create some like ongoing stable programming structure. So more to come on that. Also just ongoing communications related to Castlewood. We've had robust conversations with that already this evening. And also this evening, we've identified just a number of workshop items. Council, as you're thinking about how you're doing your job over the upcoming year, other workshop topics or things we need to surface, even if it's just for basic council education. Happy to entertain that. Just let us know if, if there's background information that you want to spend time in a workshop session to get more detail. I don't have anything further this evening and being the end of our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Hesnick?
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Munson. And Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hesnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Councilmember Valento?
Hi.
And Mayor Bain?